Each month, we take time from one of our school board meetings to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students, staff, and our employees. It's indeed my distinct pleasure to begin tonight's program with our Awards of Excellence. Before I do so, I do want to take a moment to invite Mr. Thatcher, school board member, to assist me with the distribution of our certificates of recognition tonight. As he's coming forward, I would also, at this time, like to invite Armel Elementary School Principal Heather Miller and PE teacher Jason Tressner to come forward. As they're doing so, I would, at this time, would ask that, to join me to assist in a continuation of recognition and distribution that we welcome American Heart Association Youth Market Director Heather Wall. Heather, who is a Sherrando High School graduate, is here tonight to make a special presentation.
I am excited to be here tonight to present an award on behalf of the American Heart Association. This award is a top honor in the state of Virginia, and this award is going to Armel Elementary for being number seven in fundraising in the state of Virginia for the 1718 school year. The school raised $23,927, and I'm going to present this award to Mr. Tressner and Mrs. Miller, and Logan Tressner as well. So, thank you guys so much for all of your hard work and for saving more lives and helping those with sick hearts. And I do want to thank Frederick County Schools as well, Dr. Savine, for letting me do that today, and for letting me work in the school throughout the year. Thank you guys so much for all of your hard work.
What a wonderful way to start off our Awards of Excellence program. Congratulations to Armel, Mrs. Miller, and Mr. Tressner for their efforts in terms of raising awareness. Last month, students from Greenwood Mill and Stonewall Elementary Schools participated in the Regional Destination Imagination Tournament with the following results. I'd like to first recognize teams from Greenwood Mill, and that team, the first team, is Golden Gators. The Golden Gators placed first at Regionals and advanced to the state tournament for Challenge A on target. They finished in the first place at the state competition and earned the opportunity to compete in the global finals next month in Kansas City, Missouri. Let's hear it for this team. Now, it's my pleasure to recognize each of the team members as your name is called. I would ask that you come forward. Mr. Thatcher will greet you, and the whole team, if you'll remain up front until all the team members are appropriately recognized. First, I'll begin with Jason Jackson Carr. As Brant's coming forward, I do want to recognize their team manager, Amy DeZian, and I want to congratulate our Golden Gators, and good luck at the Nationals. All right, outstanding. Continuing with recognition of Greenwood Mill Elementary Teams, I'll move on to the Chop 'n Choppers. The Chop 'n Choppers placed second at Regionals and also advanced to the state tournament for Challenge A on target. They finished in fourth place at the state tournament. Now, it's my pleasure to recognize those members of the Chop 'n Choppers. I'd like to recognize the Chop 'n Choppers team manager, one of our own, school board member, Mrs. Shante Washington. We'll pause for just a moment for pictures. Continuing on with Destination Imagination recognitions and celebrations, we will move on to our Stonewall Team, the Team Dynamite. The Dynamite Team placed first at Regionals and advanced to the state tournament for Challenge B, Medical Mystery. They finished in eighth place at the state tournament, and that is indeed my pleasure to recognize those team members that could be present tonight. I'll begin with Kathryn Lee. I'd also like to recognize our team manager, Joe Sabadie. Congratulations to our Stonewall Team. In November, middle school students participated in the American Mathematics Competition VIII at the Virginia Military Institute. Approximately 98,000 students nationwide and approximately 800 students from Virginia participated in the event with the following results. Earning first place and honor roll for scoring in the top 5% nationally, from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Justin Jensen. Earning second place from Robert E. Ailer Middle School, Matthew Sipe. Earning third place from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Hannah Stephanidas. Earning third place from Frederick County Middle School, Fletcher Powell. Another third-place finish from Frederick County Middle School, Reed Melanie. Frederick County Public Schools held its annual Spelling Bee in February. The first through third-place winners advanced to compete in the regional spelling bee, with the fourth-place winner serving as an alternate. It is my pleasure to recognize those honorees who could attend tonight, and I'll start with the first-place finisher from Frederick County Middle School, Andrew Link. Third-place finish from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Delaney LaFolche. I do think it's worth recognizing two additional recipients, honorees that could not be here. Second place from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Jack Wallace. Jack also placed second in the regional spelling bee. Let's hear it for Jack. Also want to recognize our alternate from Frederick County Middle School, Olivia John. Congratulations. Thank you. In March, students from our middle schools participated in the district-level forensics competition with the following results, and I have a very long list here, but I will simply recognize those that could be in attendance. Start with the category and pros. First-place finish from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Madison Murphy. In the area of monologue, first place from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Morgan In the area of duo monologue, earning second place finish from Robert E. Ailer Middle School, Kate Bryant and Star DeHaven Venable. Earning third place from Frederick County Middle School, Isis Connor and Peyton Hughes. And rounding out this fine group of award recipients, earning first place from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School in the area of speech, Ashley McGuire. I'll pause just for a moment for pictures. The Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School's 7th grade girls volleyball team was this year's Frederick County Junior League champions. They did not lose a set this season. Think about that. Did not lose a single set, and they were undefeated. Certainly, it's worth congratulating these team members. Before we call them up here, let's congratulate them. Now, I'd like to recognize those team members, Emily Maiden. Also like to recognize our coach, Eric Heflin. Once again, just want to emphasize, I'm still amazed, the whole season without, you know, someone earning a set. That's just unbelievable. Now, I'd like to transition to the HOSA State Leadership Conference awardees. I'd like to give you some background regarding HOSA. HOSA is an international student organization whose mission is to promote career opportunities in the healthcare industry and to enhance the delivery of quality healthcare to all people. In March, students from James Wood High School competed in the HOSA State Leadership Conference with the following results. Once again, I'll just reference those that could be in attendance tonight. In the area of healthcare display, earning second place, Eliza Lehman. In the area of healthcare photography, earning fifth place, Ashley Januzzi. Congratulations to our HOSA Award winners. Now, I'd like to move on to Virginia DECA District 9 Competition Award winners. Once again, providing a little background, DECA is a student organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Earlier this year, students from Sherrando High School participated in the Virginia DECA District 9 Competition with the following results. In the area of social media, earning second place, Andrew Bray. In the area of business law and ethics team decision-making, earning second place, Evan Evan and Ann, they participated in the DECA State Competition, which was held in Virginia Beach this past March. That's pretty impressive. I'd like to continue on with the Virginia Beach State Competition. In the area of creative marketing projects, earning fifth place, McKenna Williams. In the area of financial literacy, promotion project, earning third place, Hannah Craig. 2018-19 Virtual Business Fashion Challenge, second round, top Virginia winner, Keith Robertson. 2018-19 Virtual Business Sports Challenge, second round, top Virginia winner, overall finalist, second in Southern Region. I'd like to recognize Bryce Williams. Once again, let's hear it for our Sherrando students. The school board has recognized April the 8th through the 12th as Public School Volunteer Week. Volunteers play an important role in all of our schools, and we now like to recognize many exceptional volunteers who were selected by the schools at which they volunteer to be recognized this evening. I'd like to thank each of you for working together with our staff to help each of our students reach their full potential and to be successful. I'd like to start with volunteer from Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School, Gary Brasswell. Volunteering at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, Sherri Alexander. And joining Sherri, Adam Faals. Representing Armel Elementary Schools volunteer, Lyndon Williamson. Volunteering at Evendale Elementary School, Sarah Murphy. Volunteering, representing Frederick County Middle School, Jessie Moffett. Volunteering at Gainesboro Elementary School, Bunny Bellis. Volunteering at Greenwood Mill Elementary School, Roger Grandin. Volunteering at Milbrook High School, Patrick Ellis. Representing Orchard View Elementary School, Stacy Hega. And Lindsay Pozniak. I must say, this is a nice problem to have. So many wonderful volunteers. We're running out of space here. That's great. We're almost there. Red Bud Run Elementary School, Amy Singh. And volunteering at Sherrando High School, Bill Craig. And volunteering at Stonewall Elementary School, Natalie Totutka. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you. Just, we appreciate your support of our teachers, our students, and thank you for the partnership and the time that you spend giving back to our students and our community. This time, I'll continue with our special recognitions as we prepare to conclude tonight's Awards of Excellence. I'd like to ask that Frederick County Public Schools teacher, Joy Kirk, if she could come forward. As Joy's coming forward, I'd like to add that Mrs. Kirk was awarded the Virginia Education Association Award for Teaching Excellence. To give you a little background on Mrs. Kirk, she serves as a gifted and talented education teacher at Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School and James Wood Middle School. She was selected to receive the award due to her professional practice, advocacy for the teaching profession, attention to diversity, community engagement, and leadership in professional development. She is also a candidate for the National Education Association Award for Teaching Excellence. She's representing the Commonwealth. I know she will represent Frederick County and the Commonwealth of Virginia very well in the national competition. Now, as we prepare to conclude tonight's award ceremony, I will invite Mr. Thatcher, school board member, forward to provide closing comments to the audience and the group. Once again, there's so much to be proud of in Frederick County. It is nice to see a full house. The fact that we cannot fit you in at the school board office and we have to come over to this auditorium really speaks volumes about the talented students, staff, and engaged employees and parents that we have in Frederick County.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. Appreciate that. And thanks for participating.
And thanks for warming up the crowd for me. Appreciate that. So, I guess just what I wanted to say is the students have done great tonight. Let's give them another round of applause. But as I think about how well the students have done, I think that that's probably, there's probably parents involved that make that happen. And I know there's plenty of parents in this room. And I think that we, the parents ought to get a round of applause as well, so let's I also want to say thank you to the volunteers that were just awarded, all the volunteers, not just the award winners, but the volunteers really help out the public schools a lot and we really appreciate that. And we always love to have more volunteers, so keep that in mind if you're not one already. But this concludes the Awards of Excellence and we, the school board, will be headed back to a school board meeting where we will finish some important business. We invite you to come back if you would, if you feel so inclined. But other than that, the award ceremony is concluded. So, thank you. Thank you very much.